I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for July 25th, 2023 at 5:46 PM. Uh, tenants' roll call?
Alder Person's Wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Capusta.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
The meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Approval of the minutes from May 9th, 2023?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Okay. Although, um, actually, before we approve it, I guess I skipped the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
Move to approve.
Second.
Alders in favor of the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Um, same, or approval of the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion, hearing done. Alders in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. New business, gun range repair at landfill. Scott? Or is Chief going to present this?
So, um, to make everyone aware, we do have a gun range. It's on the landfill property. We have a contract. Jeff has looked over the contract. It goes for another four years. We are in charge of all the maintenance. And the back wall, which is a berm of the gun range, is kind of sliding or shearing off, and it's getting worse and worse. And what's happening is our gun range is used a lot, not just by us, by a variety of different authority, local authorities, and, you know, uh, City Milwaukee uses a lot, New Berlin, other people are requesting to use it more. And the bullets are hitting the wall and popping over and beginning to hit some of the buildings at GFL. So, it, it needs to get repaired, um, pretty quickly. So, we were out there, myself, Ryan and I were out there. We were out there with the, the operation managers, Dan and Chad, over there at the landfill. And the plan to do is to take the fence wall down between the two, use their clay, which is great, and then load it up in trucks and bring it over, and then raise the berm back up about 10 to 15 feet. And then we would basically reseed it, erosion control, and we have a two-month window. So, middle of August to about first week, second week in October, we have to get this work done because right now I'm working with the police of not scheduling anyone to shoot, um, at that time. So, the cost. So, I got two bids right now. I'm waiting on a third one. First one is about $172,000. And the next one is $246,000 to get this work done. So...
Do we just need target practice?
So, and at 1.2, just to let you know, at 1.2, the landfill was offered to help us out and load their trucks. But right now, the amount of garbage that they are collecting, they have to start focusing on working on their next cell already. So, they cannot provide us an excavator, which is costing us about another $20,000 to $25,000 for that. No, no. Just, it's in that bid, but it would have been, uh, reduced. So...
So, are we, we're getting funds for the other departments that are using it, right? We're charging them?
So, that's a whole different deal that the police have worked out, and right now there's other contracts related to that. Um, and I don't have much answer compared to, the chief might have some more answer to that. But right now, from my understanding, the funds are more of like, pay for the gas there, the propane tank. And the contract still goes along for, for a year, two years, or one year? Couple more years that we still have contracts in place, and part of that contract is also with the FBI and who paid for some of the upcharges. So...
Yeah, I knew we had the contract with the FBI originally.
And Milwaukee.
With, for the shooting range, to be able to use it, it, you know...
Those are the first two agreements that we had on it.
But I thought with the opening up to everybody, we were gonna, there was gonna be a fee involved because we are maintaining it.
There was a fee, but I think what's gonna happen is when those contracts go away, I think everyone's going to sit down and we really look at those contracts.
We're gonna revisit it.
Yeah.
When the existing agreements are done.
We walked into it pretty generous.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the FBI paid for it initially.
Some of, yeah, some of the stuff they paid for, if you look at the original stuff back...
Right, but originally, nobody was supposed to shoot there except the FBI in Meskego.
And Milwaukee.
When we opened it up, we, you know, I guess, we just assumed there was gonna be some help with maintaining it because obviously it's not cheap.
Yeah, again, but, um, I don't think, has anyone ever heard of us repairing the, the berms?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, you know more than I do. Um, we can't, we couldn't even figure out when we last did it. So...
We did, and we were fortunate because at that time, the landfill did help us with it considerably.
Okay. Do you remember what year that was from?
Gosh, it had to be at least five, five years ago, maybe?
Uh, it started about six years ago, and I've never...
Okay, then it was, it, it, maybe it was 10 years ago. I know we did it, though. We had done it in the past.
Okay. Ryan can't remember when, when we did it. I mean, we do touch-ups, but this is a pretty big, significant...
Trying to remember who the chief was then. If I can remember who the chief was, I'll be able to tell you.
So...
Do our contracts permit any kind of special assessment for this type of work?
The existing ones, no.
Okay.
But, like I said, going forward, I think we're gonna re-look at how we, those agreements, not only covering, like, they said, keeping the lights and the gas on, it's gonna, there's gonna be like a, you know, a capital fund that we can pay into so we can...
So, where would these funds come from?
Landfill.
Landfill.
What's the big difference in those two? I mean, those are pretty big, far apart bids, the pricing, is there...
Yeah. Um, one can do it quicker. The other one doesn't really want the work, so he threw a pretty high number. One's more local. Um, again, we, we were trying to get bids as fast as we could. And this is like within the last month, and one guy goes, "I'm so busy. I'll throw you a number." But it, we kind of knew that one was gonna be a little high.
What happens if we don't, and we just shut it down? I mean, like, if we're like, hey, we're not gonna fix it right now, and now we've got all these, like, what's gonna be...
So, what, what's happening is certifications. So, we have probably agreements with certain people to use this gun range. So, that's a separate agreement. I don't know how that would work of, hey, by the way, we're shutting it down because I am not familiar with...
It's unsafe. It's, unless you want to chip in $10,000.
But, but the thing is, it's not unsafe for the shooters. It's unsafe for the, the people in the back.
If I fire a gun in my backyard, yes, it's not unsafe for me. It's unsafe for my neighbors.
It creates a liability. It's, um, and, and, you know, our, our officers do, and you can jump in if I'm wrong in this, but your officers do need to be certified, so we would have to have them go elsewhere and be paying for it to be, for them to get certified.
Would that cost us $107,000, or $100,000 if you were to temporarily use somewhere else?
I have no idea.
Sorry.
That's something I was thinking too.
Uh, and then the cost to transport officers outside the city to do other training is gonna actually increase, but I, I couldn't give you my exact...
The number of ranges around this area are getting smaller and smaller, so more people are asking us to even use our range more, just, just to let you know. Um, it's surrounded by landfills. There's not a lot of other people. Um, a lot of people don't even know it exists, to tell you the truth. So...
So, how many departments are using it right now?
City Milwaukee, the feds have not used it very much.
Well, I mean, but they're, they're allowed to use it. So, you have the city and the FBI and...
And then, correct. When we talked about Berlin, like, we allow the teams that are part of our collective SWAT team to, for instance, come down and use it in conjunction with the training that we are already providing.
Okay, and is there fees involved with that?
The fees are part of, like...
It's part of being...
...be part of this, this work, this incident team. And then they come in, no, they're not charged individually because it's a range that we have individually.
But they don't have anything that they can use, so...
But they have other stuff.
They would have to pay to go somewhere else to do that.
No, because, okay, like, our SWAT team, we don't have our own SWAT team. It's a countywide SWAT team. We're part of that whole team. So, our portion of, our contribution to that is we use the range. New Berlin might have something that we don't have that they train over there for. Heartland might have something that they go train over there for. So, we all kind of share our facilities for that team. It doesn't mean that the whole department from New Berlin's coming, just their SWAT members.
But...
Yeah.
Heartland is not coming to Meskego to do the range walk.
Right.
Uh, but when we offer and when we do our SCIT training, it's also a benefit to have our SCIT training and the officers come to Meskego, uh, if we have a specific incident, like, first year.
Just too bad we didn't have a, a maintenance fee involved or something thinking down the road on that. And any other question is, how long is this gonna take? Two weeks?
No, we got about, planning for about two months.
Two months?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, when the agreement was signed about 10 years ago, when we looked at it...
Yeah.
Uh, the maintenance was 100% of the city.
Yeah.
Yep. Because it's, well, this is gonna take two months, and is that like constant work of two months? I mean, they're gonna be bringing that much dirt in for two months to do...
Oh, yeah. We, we're moving it just from the landfill, on one side of the landfill, to this, I mean, again...
Okay, I was just looking at the scope of this because I, I was just wondering, you know, DPW get involved, but if it's two months of constant...
No, no, no.
It's way outside their...
And the other question I have is, is if this is, if, if we're shooting buildings right now, why is it open?
No, a-again, it's, it's shearing lefts, like, again, it's not all the time, but what's happening is they noticed it, they brought it up to us, we started like investigating what's going on, we looked at the contract.
And there's holes in the building.
One, one thing that's important about what he's saying is the current lease, we indemnify the, um, the landfill. So, if something bad does happen, if the landfill gets sued, we're, and they have to pay, we're paying. So, we, it's an important thing, I think, to repair.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just questioning it, the, the openness of it right now. I know you guys gotta use the facility and stuff, but, uh, what are we doing in the meantime to repair the areas that, that it's happening in? I mean, to shield the areas that it's happening in?
Uh, there's, there's nothing you can do. The, the ground's kind of shearing straight off.
I'm guessing what the alderman is trying to get at is, is, is it safe to use right now or not?
Yeah, it, it's, it's safe to use right now. We know what our limitations are. We just need to get this thing fully done so this doesn't continue happening. And we have a window. We, we literally have this window of two months where nothing is scheduled, um, for shooting. So...
So, the issue with it is it's eroding. It's not completely eroded, so we want to get ahead of it before it does become a problem.
So, that money will come out of this year's budget?
I'll let Sharon just, yeah, it's gonna have to because it's gonna be spent this year. So, it'll be in this year's budget, but it'll, um, it'll become out of contingencies or something like that. I'll, we'll work that out with Sharon. What it's gonna end up doing is, we're gonna have to make some choices. You're prioritizing this capital project ahead of the stuff we're gonna be going through in a few weeks. So, there'll have to be some choices being made at that point. You know, this is an asset that most departments don't have, that it's, it's, it's a great benefit to us. Initially, when this was put up, the feds and Milwaukee essentially paid for it all. We, we really didn't spend any taxpayer money for it. Um, and because of that, their agreements were, we maintain it. We'll put it up, you guys maintain it. That's the contract that we're going through that's expiring. When it does expire, when we re-up it, we're gonna rework it since they're not gonna be putting in a big capital cost at that point. We're gonna have to, they're gonna have to either do an initial buy-in or, um, an annual, you know, maintenance fee or something. So, we're, we're aware we have to do that. But I, I guess I just want to make it clear that the two main users of this, um, or initially the two main users of this actually paid for the whole thing. So, it's not like they were getting a free ride by any means.
And I think, I've been really sitting here trying to remember. I think Slocum was the mayor?
That's, that's...
Well, no, no, it's over ten years. Actually, De-DeAngelo's...
I mean, the, not the mayor, the, um...
Chief.
Oh, Slocum was never chief.
No, 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 no. What, I, it was around...
It was built under DeAngelo's.
If you can look and see when I went through a citizens academy, it was shortly thereafter.
Well, we were in the same class, so that was 2009 or 10?
Okay.
Well, I think we still have got to move ahead with this. I mean, it only makes sense, you know, regardless of what, what happened in the past.
And I, I know it's a big number, um, and I don't want to belittle that part by any means. But the landfill revenue is up dramatically, and it's gonna continue going up dramatically because most landfills in southeastern Wisconsin are, um, near full, and they're not making new ones. And literally, we are. So, um, it's good for us long-term. It's still a big number, and I don't want to diminish that.
And it still has to be done.
But it, something has to be done, and we're fortunate that we actually have this backfilling money to be able to take care of that.
You know, I just don't have a problem, I just have a problem with planning, and, uh, it's nice to be ahead of the game than behind it. So...
Ideally, we...
So, now we're gonna learn from this and, and hopefully, uh, I mean, I don't know if we need to ask other departments or what to, to do something for, for using our facility, you know?
And I think we got it done without paying anybody because it was done between Public Works and the landfill. The landfill did the majority of it because they had another project going on at the time where they could...
Initially, the whole cost of the thing was four, $500,000, if I remember. So...
Right.
I mean, even, that's even with a lot of in-house labor.
Yeah.
So, the whole berm is just...
It's just dirt. That's all it is right now?
Yeah, we're, we're taking clay from digging out the next cell. We're literally moving it, putting it on, starting a bigger, wider base, and then building straight up.
It's a berm that, at least as high as the ceiling. I mean...
Yeah, it's, it's...
It's a big berm.
Like, this is, this is not like, you know, this is gonna be full graders, bulldozers. I mean, it's, it's, it's a good project to do. So...
Is this gonna happen again in 10 years where like it slides and falls? Is this normal?
Well, I'm hoping when we create a wider base...
Well, you put grass on it.
And we put grass in and do more of the erosion control, but the, 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 the side slopes are pretty steep. So, by us increasing the base out and making it wider, you tend to help it from shearing. So, I'm hoping that we, we're not gonna run into the same thing again. Um, but again, you have earth berms, you have people shooting rounds in there. Um, you know, we maintain it, make sure the trees don't grow through it, you know, and stuff like that.
So, did we notice this happening for a while, or...
No, it was more brought to the attention, I think, Dan and Chad brought it up to me about four, four months ago, six months ago at our, at our meeting. Um, they said, "Hey, can we have a, we could talk?" And I said, "Yeah, what's going on?" And they're like, "Hey, um, it looks like it's eroding in the back there more and more." So, that's when we, Ryan and I went out there, we started doing our assessment and looking at it, and yeah, you can tell totally.
And that's my point. So, we'll be assessing this more often then.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, again...
Something else on the list to do.
Again, you know, I don't know if bullets are flying over the berm and hitting the buildings until they tell me, you know? So, um, once they, they told us that, I think you were there at the last meeting, then it was like, okay, we're gonna start looking at it. So...
That's funny. I mean, it's, it's not funny, but it is.
Again, um, the use out there, guys, is a lot. Um, City Milwaukee was out there. They had to get their, all their folks trained for rifles, and I mean, it's, it was, it's non-stop. So...
And I think the weapons have grown.
Yep.
They've been using a bigger, we can hear them better.
City Milwaukee's asking for more taxes. Maybe you can share some of that.
Don't count on it.
We'll keep you, we'll keep your, we'll keep your praises as, as we move forward with this.
We talked to the new mayor over there.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion on the old PD. Um, in front of you, you have a memo from me, discussing, you know, the process of, sorry, of what we've all gone, what we've all done so far. And that was, I created a, to recap, we, I created a citizens committee a year ago, last April, to look at options for that building. Um, and they looked at everything from leveling it to what their proposal is to, um, looked at everything in between. Um, this was, group was about 14 citizens on it. Everyone from senior citizens to, um, you know, people in their four, probably 40s was the youngest, I would say. You know, they, different, different ideas for what use is and everything else. Currently, the building, according to Sharon, I talked to her today, and what our, our cost is to run the building as is. Right now, it's costing us between $75,000 to $100,000 a year. So, doing nothing's not an option. Um, I had Scott, we, our last discussion, some of the questions came of what would it cost to, what would it cost to, um, level the building? So, Scott, um, got some quotes on that. We presented it. There's a quote in there, uh, for about $340,000. That does not include any, if there's asbestos or, um, pulling up asphalt or anything else. So, realistically, probably looking at more like $500,000 to level the building. Um, before I got in office, there was discussion about keeping the garage part and leveling the front part. Um, that'd actually be more, a little more expensive than, um, leveling it because you're essentially still leveling the building. Um, and then you have to reface the existing building somehow. So, that cost, we're estimating around one to one, one to 1.25 million. And then the option that is, if you go through the packet, um, it also has, um, the plans that came out of the committee for remodeling the building into a community center, um, which has got a number of flexible meeting rooms, recreational space for recreational planning, uh, preschool, ties the bill, puts a warming kitchen into it, ties the building into the park by putting, um, like slide-up windows on the east side of it. Redoes the roof, parking, um, a number of things. And, and we can go through, you can go through the packet on that. But the cost on that one, um, we're, I'm just saying right around five, about 5 million is what I'm estimating it to be. Their number's a little lower on there, but it's about a year old, so we'll see where things are. I made a mistake last meeting when we talked about this. I moved the decimal point on what the average house would be. So, um, I think at that time, we were talking about the average house around 300, uh, $300 a year. It's actually between, well, it should have been 30, um, but interest rates have moved a little bit since then. So, I'm estimating high, somewhere between $35 to $40 for an average $400,000 house in Meskego, if we were to borrow for this. Um, you know, I'm not necessarily looking for a answer tonight on what you want to do, but I'd like some of this discussion because, like I said, doing nothing on this is really not an option. It's throwing away money.
How's it costing us $100,000 for not doing anything there?
Well, because things are breaking in there and that have to, like, mechanicals.
So, we shut the water off.
Is the water off on it? No. But there's, there's a cost to doing, I mean, you still heat, you're gonna heat the building. You, I mean, you just want to, you just want to have the building complete mothballed.
I'm just saying, if we're paying that now, that's kind of crazy.
It is.
Because all we have to do is shut the water off. It's summertime.
Well, we are, I mean, right now, we're using it for recreation backup. We do, the police use it for training still.
Okay, then we are using it.
We are using it, but it's not high use. Let's just say, it's not worth, I wouldn't continue using it for the cost of it, for the type of use we're getting out of it. Since it's there, we use it.
So, the, when we talk about using it for community center, I saw one of the things you said in there is daycare and that kind of...
I didn't say daycare.
Oh, I thought it said daycare in there. Okay.
It said preschool.
Preschool. Oh, preschool.
Preschool.
Yeah, I don't want to compete with...
We already, we already offer this program. It would just put it in a better place.
I had the opportunity to sit on that committee, and, uh, as the mayor mentioned, the committee was a good cross-section of the community, a lot of community groups, um, people that have a good stake in the community. Uh, we've got a growing community, and we've got a community that needs more and more recreational services. This enhancement to this building provides a lot of the space that we need. It maintains the campus that we have here. It's an enhancement to the park that we have here already. I, I think I'm, I'm all in on this. I think it's a good project, and I think something that, that community will need and will grow into in the future. Meeting rooms, there's a, a shortage of meeting rooms throughout the city. This provides additional space for that as well. Just my comments.
And we were gonna enhance the parking, right?
What?
We need more parking, right?
Yeah, there is parking if you look at the plans.
I just have a question. I wasn't in, in the, on the committee, but was there any talk of demolishing it and then just building something brand-new that's smaller and more specific?
Well, we have the foundation.
Rather than retrofitting, it's just a question. Like I said, I wasn't in on any of the meetings.
Alderman Kubaki, correct me if I'm wrong, but that question actually did come up, and it was, if I recall, it was more expensive.
It was more expensive to do that.
You're, you're using the existing foundation, footings, and, um, the basement's already excavated. You, you're using the main framework of the building, um, you know, so you have, it's got some bones that you can reuse.
Okay.
So...
Unless you want to do it later in the future, then it'd be a good idea to raise it. I just, I'm looking at this picture on, you know, it's Bray Architects towards the middle of the thing here. It's a nice colored picture. We're gonna add all this parking in here, and it looks like there's a lot of parking around it already. Are we gonna maintain all that parking and add new parking? Or, I mean, what do we, what, you know, I'm...
We need the parking.
We need more parking around here. There's no question about that. I mean, we're constantly full.
Well, I just, I, I'm just looking at that. It's just like, it, it looks like that's gonna be a main parking lot, and the rest is gonna be dormant like it is now, most of, most of the time. Um, that's just a question I bring up. The other question I bring up is that, uh, in here, it says, I read this somewhere, it says, "Bringing in more revenue. At the same time, we want to charge people 35 to 45 bucks more a year." So, what is the bringing in more revenue is gonna be minute? Is that what it is? I mean, it's not gonna do anything?
How are your revenue made? One, one source of that will be more recreational planning that we can do as far as classes we can offer. There, there's a whole population of, um, like, pre, preschool-studied aged children that we just don't have facilities that we can even offer. And there's a huge demand for that of, you know, I mean, Tammy can probably speak to this a little more, and I know you're not prepared to.
No, I understand. My, my point, my point would be is that if we're, if we're looking to bring revenue into this, we're gonna spend $5 million, and we're still gonna charge taxpayers extra money.
I am, I am not saying that there's any, there's a, a revenue stream that's gonna offset the cost of building this. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that. It's gonna...
It's just gonna help cover the cost of the recreation point.
Of operating it.
Yeah, okay.
And it'll help the oper, the operations cost, and it'll also help, um, as you know, that the recreation administration part is, one of the goals is to have as much of that revenue from recreation to offset the cost of salaries for the administration parrot racks. So, um, the more things we can offer, the more we get towards that goal.
Well, the other comment I got is we, we've had 14 community members here on a committee. How far out did that reach into the public sector to see what other people do besides a nice little committee? You know, I mean, it might represent everything, but I just remember all the heat we took when we, we built the police station, and, and we were sold a bill of goods on how bad it was over there. And actually taking a tour, it was pretty bad, but, you know, also, we can repurpose this building. But, um, what are we planning to do to get this out to the public, other than if we say we're gonna have a, a public hearing on it? Are we gonna try to get any other input on this beforehand?
It's up to council on how you want to do that. I mean, you can, we, we can do an informational stuff through our newsletter. We can...
Well, that's what I was thinking. That's my point. Yeah.
We can, we can do a whole plethora of things.
Let's, let's get some...
It's not a, it's, I, again, I don't want to sound like I'm diminishing what $5 million is. It's a lot of money. But, um, you know, you look at what other communities are doing, they're a lot more than that, and they're, all they're doing, they're going to the point of informing, here's what we're doing. You can give feedback on it. But it's not like they're going to a referendum for something like that.
No, no, I don't want to go to a referendum. I'm, I'm just going, you know, I'm just looking at the economy and inflation and so on, you know, extra money. You look at all this, and, and other communities keep raising their taxes, and we pretty much keep ours pretty steady, which, this is not a, a major increase. But I just, you know, I, I try to look at every tax dollar and where it's going and, and why, and, and in this environment, it's, it's just not, uh, you gotta be very careful how we're spending our money. So, I'd like to have a little bit more input on this. If it's just a newsletter out there, just information that we're looking to do this, you know, that, that would satisfy me, you know?
I mean, if, if, if something you guys are interested in doing that we're gonna, that we can start at least planning and getting more into the weeds on this, I mean, I can go as soon as tomorrow, start putting out the, like, at least the plans and all this, and just on social media, and get, and start getting feedback on it, letting people know. You know, that, social, social media gets, gets the word out pretty quickly.
They're not afraid to respond.
What?
Well, they're not afraid to respond.
They're not. So...
And they're gonna want to hurt these.
Yeah.
And that's the people, and that's the people who use it. So, you know...
I, I mean, the, the use of the meeting rooms by itself, without even talking recreation, I mean, by the business community and, you know, clubs and everything else, there's a huge demand for that right now. I mean, I, I...
Well, the library is an example.
Well, the library, you can't, yeah, you can't get a meeting room there hardly at all because they're all, they're all booked out, and they have certain criteria for what types of places they can do. We had some more stringent, um, policies on who we would allow to use our meeting rooms, and I've relaxed those for businesses that, like Feet Farm did all their initial screening for employees and some of their, um, training here, um, for a couple of weeks. And, um, it's Merritt, Merritt Asphalt, I think, uses it. Um, so, we, there's places out there that are clamoring to get something like this. Not that, you know, we should be subsidizing businesses at all, but, you know, if we can help make our businesses in town more successful by, you know, providing this on a temporary basis, and then in the evenings, having the Lions Club or... by, you know, providing this on a temporary basis, and then in the evenings, having the Lions Club or a wedding shower or whatever they, people want to use this for, the idea is, these rooms are very flexible, if you look at the plans.
Well, I did see the three options on there, and they almost all seem the same, except that the size of the rooms are different. So, why don't we just build one big room and put movable dividers, and then we can have all those different sized rooms in one big room?
Well, they, actually, all these rooms are the, like, the, if you look at this particular plan, the mediums, medium, small, and large rooms, all those dividers are literally, they can be pulled out to double-sized rooms, so, you know, I think...
But I'm just looking at, it's like confusing, it's like, one small, one big, this and that, one big, one small, this and that. It's like, it's almost the same thing. Just build one big, open room, if you can, and put a divider.
Well, you can cater to different, more, multiple, different sized groups at the same time, so.
What is the PD using it for right now?
We use it for training on occasion for, like, K9 training specifically, they come down here and use it for, you know, that type of thing.
If it wasn't there, where would you do that stuff?
At another location.
Okay, so you don't have space like it, where you are now? So, if we bulldoze it, you guys would have to go offsite for some of that stuff?
For, for some of that specifically, we basically use it now because it's filled.
Does it need to be vacant? If we fill it, does that...
We're not going to be using it for...
I'm not letting around, run the dog around in our building.
And, and you're not using it that often, are you? No. Okay. I mean, the building's really not being used at all, as a general rule. I mean, it's barely used, right?
Barely used. Tammy uses it a fair amount in the summer for backups for rain days and things like that.
The only other question I have is that this is going to be opening up into the park area, and I'd like to see something, some type of stage or something added to this, and it could be in the future, it doesn't have to be immediately, but it should be some kind of thought.
Kevin, we talked about that, didn't we?
What was that?
Yes, we did, yeah.
No, if, I didn't say I want to do this, I'm talking about the plans that's on here.
I know, I just, it was really out of left field, and it's not normally used.
Well, we've talked about that in, in the past, about adding some type of structure up there. I mean, we have a temporary, the festival building, it takes it down all the time, right? I mean, we can put a cement slab and a cover over it, you know? It, it doesn't have to be anything extravagant, it's just something that we should look at adding. It's going to open up into the park.
We can grow that park, you know, in different directions, I think, you know, that, that's, the way we're laying this out, it just allows that park to expand to that building and, you know...
But that's my point, you're going to have concessions there and everything, so it'd be perfect, it'd be a perfect opportunity to have the, the plan laid out even for a future use, so that if we ever decide to go in that direction, we have an idea of where it would go. I mean, you said it was brought up in the commi, in the, in the, in the committee?
Yeah, we just, we, we know that we could add it, but for cost purposes, we did put it into this plan.
So, the cost is five, roughly, estimated at 5 million. What about the borrowing cost at this time with...
It's in there. It's in there, yeah.
Oh, is it in there? I didn't miss that, too.
And in regards to the, right, in regards to demolishing, if that route would, was the route of, um, fire practice for the fire department thought of? I can't see that cost in...
Well, you still, no, the, the cost for, if you, if you go through the, the estimate, it's not to get rid of the wood in there, it's to break up the foundation, haul it all the way, fill it up.
Okay. So, fire, you know, I'm just looking at, because I know fire is practiced on other buildings years ago that...
Yeah, it's more of a...
Were being demolished.
Well, you also get a deduction when you do that from a private individual, because you're donating the building essentially, so...
Sure. Yeah, just a ques, just a thought, yeah.
So, what's everyone think?
Uh, I like the idea of you putting something on social media.
Start getting feedback.
And start getting feedback. I mean, it's costing money to do nothing. And, um, I do have people ask me, "What's going on with that? When are we going to do something with that?" So, I mean, I think the public is interested in seeing something developed there. And the longer you wait, the, with things, the way they're going right now, the rates are going up and things are, and it's costing you money just to sit there, so. It just, and as a realtor, too, I will say, things like that make our community more in track and bring more people to our community. So, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with using it for something.
Well, I'm on the same page as far as getting it out, which I brought up, but I'd like to see it go in the newsletter as well. You know, I think, uh...
I might be able to sneak it in, I don't know, where are we on that? All right. We'll see. I'm, I, I might be able to get something in the newsletter at this point.
And I'd like to see a little bleep in the front page, and if you want to put something further back, so people see it and they can read it. It's not just kind of lanced over.
I could probably squeeze at least something small to tell them to look for it on social media or something, but, yeah. We'll see, I'll take a look at it first thing in the morning. I know Christine wants to kill me right now for even suggesting it, so...
And, and you're right, the longer you wait, because we've waited way too long. I've, I've asked about this several times over the years, even with the previous mayor. But this is way overdue to do something here, so. One direction or not, either we tear it down or we fix it up. You three gentlemen have anything?
Getting community feedback would be really good. And I think, um, some social information and putting in our community newsletter would be great, and let's see what kind of feedback we get. It's a great idea.
I'm there, too, so.
Yeah, put it in the newsletter, you know, social media.
All right.
I could hear a last call to be honest with you, but it, it needs to be in the newsletter, I think.
Just informative, that's, that's my point.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Any other communications, miscellaneous business for the committee whole?